We will hear it go, it is recording.
Okay. So we are recording. Good evening and welcome everybody. I'm Mayor Steve Friedman and welcome to our July 30th special meeting of the Clyde Hill City Council. Note that this is a hybrid meeting, so we have residents and council members and city staff both here and in attendance, as well as here in attendance as well as virtually. Courtney, call the order in a roll call, please.
All council members are present.
Good, thank you. Let's start first with everyone standing, whether you're here or virtually, and recite the pledge of allegiance. Alright, so section one of the agenda includes their rules concerning rules, order and public participation. And when we get to section three on the public comment for those online, please use the raise your hand feature to get my attention and I'll call on you. If you're here in the council chambers, we have a sign up for those who have to speak. In the alternative, you can raise your hand to get my attention. Section two of the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any comments? Or do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Member Tomovich.
I move that we move item nine dot five, the police fire report to happen immediately after item four presentations. It's been on date for our responders.
Okay, so see, so first of all, do we have a motion to we move the approved, we make a change, move nine, with that nine point five. Police and fire report to right after right after section four, the presentations, that's, that's fine.
Second.
So, okay, so we have a motion with the, with the change from council member Kovac, seconded by council member Wizard Slivka. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, so we'll do that on that end, right there. Very good, I agree. That's great. Section three, non-agenda public comments. So this is an opportunity for brief comments to the city council about items not on the agenda for a public hearing in section three. And there are no public hearings scheduled for tonight's meeting. This is an opportunity for brief comments to the city council about items not on the agenda for a public hearing in section seven. The city of Clyde Hill welcomes public comments. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for their public comments. That's not, there will be not Q and A. And they are to be focused on issues solely related to city business and should be made in a respectful fashion. Please note this time is for the individual commenter only and cannot be transferred to or combined with other speakers. Council members may not respond directly at the meeting. When called, please state your name if you are a resident of Clyde Hill or the record. So, do we have any?
Jared. This is Jared Wheeler. I'm a resident. I'm also a planning commissioner. But my comments tonight are my own and no way am I representing planning commission. Just a few things I'd like to comment on. On six dot one, council member Wizard Slivka has a document there, had a published disclosure. I'd like to support what I read in there as a discussion item on moving the view hearings from the commission to the hearing examiner. I think that's a great act of consistency with other actions the council has decided on in years past, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that's great. I think it's, that person's much more skilled and able to perform that type of work than a appointed planning commissioner. The next item I want to comment on is six dot two. The Agenda Bill twenty four twenty three, motion to recall certain code for more guidance. I also support that. I think that giving the planning commission guardrails, giving them guidance and making sure that what you as a council want to be taken up and what the staff provides as data, it's, it's good to make sure that's fresh. So I really support that. Also, there's a flow chart in there. And I'd have me thinking of some, of some things, both as a resident and, and my experience in the planning commission, is the more guardrails that you can provide, I think the better it is for everyone. The more focus you can give for what you would like the planning commission to do, I think is better for everyone. When I think of the planning commission, I think of it's an independent body and that independence rests with what its decisions are, what its recommendations. Its independence doesn't stretch over to things like what the priority should be for the city as to when something gets works on, gets worked on. But the policies for the city, which is what the council puts into its recommendation for code that ought to be changed. So the more guardrails you have around, you know, when something's worked on, what specific areas of the code has evolved. And also even, I've learned another thing. Sometimes I think if people's more specific about the kind of data that's relevant, I think the commission certainly should have the opportunity, or planning commissioner should have the opportunity to ask for information and ask for data. But I look to the staff to make sure that, that you're qualifying that. That it's data that's relevant, it's data that's going to be used. Because it's easy to ask for things. I've fallen into that trap myself over time. So I just encourage you to think about what are their guidelines besides the flow chart you can put there so that people stay in their lanes and we have the greatest efficacy between the planning commission, the council staff. Six dot three, the fast path motion. I support that. I think it's great for residents. I think there's still the opportunity that the public has for disclosure. And even as a commissioner, I can still come in just like I am tonight. So if I want to get public comment as a commissioner, I can come in and do that. If all five commissioners felt very strongly, they can come in and do that. All they have to do is read what's on the agenda, make the decision to come in and speak. So I don't think anything is lost and it gives the, the city flexibility to act more efficiently. On six dot five, I've spent quite a bit of time on the vision statement. And when I read what council member Wizard Slivka put forward, I thought, well, that's, that's really what we need. We need a short aspirational vision statement. We don't need words that are found elsewhere in the comprehensive. Okay. That's it. Thank you for your time. Hope I didn't go too far.
Thanks, Jared.
You're welcome. Council member Sinwell has his hand.
So council member Sinwell.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Hopefully you can hear me. I noted, this is a question for the city in the, there was a public comment from a resident Lynn Adams who suggested the builder on the south side of their property was, I guess, at best sloppy. And she noted that she was concerned about the construction site on the north side of the property might present an environmental risk of some sort. So my question for the city would be, when, when you receive this kind of notification, does the city rely upon your normal pattern of inspecting development that's in process, or when you receive a notification like this that involves a couple of matters, one of which may or may not be serious, I don't know, without facts, but does it create a specialized response, I guess, when you get something like this, or do you, do you do you fall back on established policy and, and timing of inspections that are prescribed in your current rule set? That's the question.
Now, now, remember, is this a question as a, since this is public comment, are you just making a public comment and looking to inform us of an issue that you would like an answer to? Or is this, is this a question as a council member that you're, that would be part of our discussions?
It, it's a question from a council member to the city.
Well, it seems like the odd area to have this question, but given that you've made it.
Why, why would it be odd? Because I'm reading something that a resident provided and I have questions of what the resident provided. I don't understand why this would be odd.
Fair enough, fair enough. I apologize. So it's just, I mean, you're at, you're, you're, you want to have a discussion on her comments. The administrator, I'll, I'll leave this to you to respond at this point. So council member Sinwell, there, there's all kinds of potential options. In, in most of these cases, we're looking to avoid getting into disputes between neighbors, right? But in the case where there is some sort of a complaint, typically either the building official or the code enforcement person would be reaching out to the parties and trying to work up some kind of a solution or at least get the parties connected so they're talking. Again, without trying to get into disputes between neighbors.
Oh, I understand that. My, my question is, there's obviously civil matters that are between, those are private affairs. But in this case, it suggests that the resident is suggesting that builders are not adhering to what her expectations of norms on construction. And so I, I think you provided the answer, but but I fully recognize that we don't get involved in civil matter. But this seemed different to me because it seemed like the notion from the resident was about builder behavior and how that behavior is impacting her in terms of hazards. And, and, and I know we have rules on, you know, contract behavior. So, so I guess your answer was that it's facts and circumstances. And it sounds like you evaluate this one and, and, and pick the path that you think is best for all involved, I suppose.
And usually it's something like this, the part about the building official reaches out to the parties, the contractor, whoever, whoever's involved. Council member Wizard Slivka.
Yeah, I would like to suggest that this is something that is not a council issue. This is an administration resident issue. And this is something that the administration can certainly take offline and respond to the resident. On council, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know why I'm getting all the odd attacks tonight. I clearly said I had a question for the city. Never stated it was a council issue. And I, I don't know where that even comes from. Honestly.
I didn't, I didn't appreciate, I apologize. I didn't appreciate that this was related to the, to the, to the public comment that was in the packet. So I understand your, your comment, your question. That being, that being said, I think we are, there's no other comments. So public comment is closed. We'll move on to section four, presentations. We have the state auditor's office. Lisa, I'll leave this to you to introduce our speakers and set up the present, you know, set up the presentation.
So as, as you can see, you've all received a handout from our state auditors and they had wrapped up our twenty one, twenty two state audits. So we still are, haven't done twenty three yet. So mind you, these are a couple, a couple of years ago. But they're here to go over the results of the audit and I'll let them introduce themselves and their backgrounds and roles at the state auditor's office.
Sure. Yes. So good afternoon. My name's Haji Adams. I'm the audit manager for Teamwork in County. Julie, who is supervisor on the audit as well. And then we had Shawah who would perform the audit. She's out on vacation today. So we're here to share the results of the twenty one, twenty two financial and accountability audits. Alright, so in front of you, you have a packet of information on the right side and the left side. So I just wanted to let you know all that information's there. Includes draft copy of the reports that we had and the exit conference adjournment for today as well. So we did perform a financial statement audit. So with that audit, we do issue opinion on whether the financial statements are frequent material errors and are correct and fairly presented. We've also performed an accountability audit as well. So with that accountability audit, on that purpose of that is to determine whether the districts comply with state laws, rules, regulations, your own policies and procedures as well. And safeguarding of public resources.
Do the camera on them so members of the community could also.
It'd take a while to get the results.
Okay, I don't need to be off cam.
Yeah, so I, and with that, go ahead and go through our reports that we have as well.
Great, thank you. Alright, so before we delve into the details of the presentation, we'd really like to extend our appreciation to city staff, especially Dean and Lisa. They make every effort to make this audit process a smooth one so that we you know, get out. Alright, so like Haji mentioned, we perform a, an accountability audit and the financial statement audit there for both years, twenty twenty one and twenty two. So let's pull out, so on the right pocket, please pull out the accountability audit report. This is just a draft copy, but the final report will be exactly the same as this one. Let's go to page four. So I already highlighted the important section so that you don't have to go through the whole report. So with the areas that we selected for audit, we're able to conclude that the, the city complied with in all material respects, with all the applicable state laws, regulations and the city's own policies. However, we noticed certain matters that we have to report in a management letter, which communicates some significant issues, not significant enough to be reported as a finding. However, we think that it warrants the attention of city management. And then we'll go into a little bit more detail about that. So then let's go to the bottom of this page four. There are some bullet points from those early areas that we focused on this audit. So we review some payroll over time, meeting balances in the for, for certain individuals. We selected to look at procurement process in a public works project. We looked at the electronic funds transfer. Then we also looked at buildings and collections on accounts receivables. And then the last two items, those are what we call the statewide theme that we have to look at those two areas in every audit that we conduct statewide. So for open public meetings, we tested and then make sure that the city comply with minutes, meetings and executive session requirements. And then we also evaluated the financial conditions of the city to make sure that there are no indications of financial distress. So then this is about the meat of this accountability audit report. And let's go a little bit more into the management letter. Now, remember, a management letter report level, there's something that I mentioned before that is not as significant as a finding, but we, we need to communicate that to management. So it is labeled, it's towards the end of the paper. There's a one page, double sided. So just in a nutshell, we got a loss reported to our office. So with that, we will, we looked into the city's policies and internal controls and then we came up with some regulations that, as you can see, that the city should just follow its own policies and then also make sure that the policies contain all the required elements to address all the cyber loss risk.
Right, right. So there was a, the city did make one payroll payment totaling about forty three hundred dollars to a fraudulent bank account. So we made a lot of review that control processes around the payroll and also the policy as well. Then we just had some recommendations for the city as well. So that just some food, adding some additional elements in your policy around electronic funds transfers. And then also, even though the city had verification procedures, it just wasn't consistently or adequately followed for its intended purpose when this occurred as well. And then while we were working on the audit, which was amazing, the city's been taking steps to improve that policy. We discussed that as well with the management. So we definitely appreciate that as well. So just enhancing some of the policies that you have around electronic funds transfers would be great. And then also just trying to add quick communication for those updates as well to the city as well.
Any questions on that? Yes, did the city get the forty three eighteen back?
It is weird unless you ensure that. We tried.
Yeah, so, so with that, you know, there's so many days you know, after transaction happens, right? And so there, with electronic funds transfers, it can be a little bit more difficult to get funds back as well across the state. Been seeing this happen, finding that actually around the cybersecurity area as well.
We were notified in the morning on Monday for a transaction that happened on Friday. It was a payroll, it was on a Friday. The recipient that was the phishing scam that happened didn't get reported until Monday. So we contacted the bank Monday morning. But unfortunately, the bank was not able to get the recipient to return the funds. Not surprising.
So with the increased number of cyber loss that's happening throughout the state and we would suggest that constantly check back in the bar's manual, bar's manual, which is just the guidance that we're giving to other governments, just trying to make sure that, you know, you have all the required elements in the policy. So, you know, it is hard to enforce practice with our policy. So, so then making sure that, yeah, do everything possible to, to minimize that loss. Moving on to the financial statement audit report draft. Sorry, we don't have page numbering. I'm just going, but if you are moving through maybe the third page and then we try to highlight in yellow, important language. So in a financial statement audit, besides, we're looking in your financial statement presentation, making sure that your financial numbers are presented fairly in all material respects. We're also looking at your controls for preparation of those financial statements. So then so with this financial statement audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in your internal controls and then there are no instances of non-compliance. The wording that you like. And then going on to the next before, where it says report on the audit of financial statement. And this is the opinion that we give after reviewing the financial statement. It just basically says that the financial statement of the city of Clyde Hill were presented in all material respects, the cash and investment of the city, that it was fairly presented and there are no material mistakes.
So I'd like to call that a clean audit of the financial statements.
And then the rest of this report is just sort of play language. You like to read it?
It's fun reading.
Okay, so there are a few to require communication by audit funders. So where we, where we tried to tell you that we did not identify any material misstatements during the audit. There were no uncorrected statements in the audit of financial statements. And then during the audit, we also required to assess the possibility that if management management may be able to circumvent certain controls and we found no issues. Any questions so far?
Alright, so move on to the next page for the agenda. So report publication finalized in the audit. So the audit reports that you have in front of you are draft copies. So the final copies will be published in about a week from today. Also, you can sign up, be notified when the reports are made available. So we provided a link for you all as well in the agenda. And you go ahead and click that and that'll give you some more information on the timeline for that report being issued. And then also, we've also included a copy of representations for management. So that's on the right side in your packet as well. And that just ensures that our audit is considered all of that information that was presented to us as well, that new information was withheld from us while we're conducting the audit as well. And then audit costs.
There is a, there's a question, council member Sinwell. He's virtual.
Sure, sure, sure.
Member. You're on mute.
Thank you. For the, for the audit, which is, I guess the question on the audit would be, which, is the approach of the audit primarily a substantive approach? Or do you sort of rely upon internal controls and test them, or do you just pick and choose depending on the financial statement lineup? Because typically in a small audit, it would probably be more of a substantive approach. But could you just paint a picture for me on your audit philosophy, controls versus substantive?
Yes, so we do do substantive testing. So we'll take a look at the numbers on the financial statements. We'll set some thresholds on which balances we'd like to review based off of risk in the financial statements. So that's how we approach the financial statement audit.
For example, like on the payroll activity, I presume that was a substantive approach and the, the commentary about the control weakness was a discovery based on notification for management to you as auditors?
Right, so when, with that particular area, we looked at your internal control process as well for payroll. But also when we do our substantive testing for your financial statements, we do take into account your internal control process around specific significant systems, right? So payroll, cash and investments, those areas that are significant to the city as a whole. But in reviewing those areas, we do take a look at your internal control processes or those processes that you have in place to prevent or detect non-compliance.
I understand. Sorry, the last question, I didn't, maybe I didn't phrase it. So do you assess or do you test? Do you test any internal controls?
We kept, so we, we assess and we may end up testing the internal controls as well. But we do review and gain an understanding of your internal control process. So we don't necessarily test every single internal control process that you have, but we do gain an understanding of your internal controls. And then instead of relying a hundred percent on your internal control process, we'll substant, we'll use substantiation to get to the end conclusion there.
As you think about your audit for twenty twenty five and maybe beyond, do you vary the extent, nature of your testing? It's like, maybe you say this time I didn't test any internal controls and payroll. But you guys come back in twenty five, would you, do you sort of have a master schedule of how you test controls at the city of Clyde Hill, or does a new team make new decisions every audit cycle?
So every audit cycle, we take a look at the audit as a whole. So we don't have a master list where we will specifically test one area every single year. So we use a risk-based approach when we perform our audits as well. So it's, it's based off of the risk that we're seeing and the activity of the city as well.
And then last question, I promise. In the rep letter seventeen C, it mentions joint ventures and, and I wasn't I wasn't aware that Clyde Hill had joint ventures, but, but maybe that's a term of convenience.
Oh, no Brownson pages.
Yeah, so that would be only if it was applicable to the city, yeah.
So that Clyde Hill has a joint venture with another legal entity?
We are partnered with Norcom and through the Arch Group for Housing. So those are the things that are reported in our audit in that category.
Yeah, I understand related, but I didn't, I didn't think they met the accounting definition of a joint venture, but maybe I'm wrong. That's it.
Thanks.
Yep, we'll keep on going. Um, yes, so at the beginning of the audit, we had to provide an estimate. So the actual audit cost will approximate that estimate as well. Your next scheduled audit will be in September twenty twenty five. So it'll be a twenty twenty three financial accountability audit as well. And then we've also provided a estimate for the next audit. So that's there for you all, preliminary estimate that you all can use. And then if you do have expenditures of federal awards of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars or more, you're going to want to notify us because that would require us to come in and conduct a federal grant compliance audit for you all. So if that does happen, just please let us know. And then also an audit survey will be released. So we value your opinion. So if you could please fill that out, let us know what went well. Also, if there's anything you can do to improve on the audit experience as well. And then we have two teams. So we have the local government support team. So if you ever have any questions and need any technical assistance, you can definitely use them. They're the same individuals that help us while we're conducting our audit. And then we have the Center for Government Innovation. They're great as well. So they can help you with any ideas for leaning, any processes that you may have. And there's no additional cost to the city for, for that as well. So we've also provided that information for you all in your packets there. And yeah, with that, I'll conclude our presentation for today.
We do have one question, closing question. You said that we'll be doing the twenty three audit in September of twenty five. Will we not be doing the twenty four audit as well in September of twenty five?
That could be adjusted. This is just based on a single year audit. So, and I know that you have communicated.
Oh, yeah, it could be two years between us. So we could do them together. That would be twenty three, twenty four.
Yes, so we definitely can do that. Yes, we can definitely do both. Yes, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you so much for joining us today. Thank you.
I appreciate your report and taking the time to, to go through the documents with us and your service to us. Thank you. You know that the auditors are sneaking out the back. That's a first. All right, so moving even on, I think I think the intention at this point was to move to section 9.5. I think that's what I wrote in there right after presentations, which is the police report. Did I get that right? Commander Hanson, are you on?
I am.
So you would you like to deliver your police report to us? I'll I'll note that Chief Cullen is on vacation this week, so we have the pleasure of Commander Hanson taking over for you.
Sure.
If you will make this a habit.
No, let's not. Nothing unusual going on over in the police department. Pretty status quo for the summertime. We had some annual training that we did in June, which was our emergency vehicle operation. Every officer has to go through the course and we practiced, we do a fast course and a slow course, and then we alternated each year. This year was a slow course. And then Detective Sway and I went to our annual force investigation team training for King County. So that was a that was a good eight hour day. I think that was the last council meeting. I went to that. It was in June for May. That was the same day. And then we had Cameron was able to do a couple assists, agency assists to Mercer Island and to Kirkland who requested a drone. So our drones are getting utilized, which is pretty cool. And other than that, it's it's been pretty, pretty normal operations on police department side.
Any any questions as a commander?
Quick question. When when we allow someone else to use our drone, is there a cost to that or we just comp that, you know, for good order?
No, there's there's we don't charge them. It doesn't cost the city anything. If we now have two drone operators, so if we have the staffing available and the time for the drone operator to respond and assist the agency, we will. If we don't have the staffing or the officer isn't working, then we will decline unless it's something earth shattering that, you know, Arbogaden has hit or something really terrible is going on, they really need outside assistance. But so far, it's just been when we've had staffing, the officer will respond and then they just come right back to Clyde Hill once the call is over. It's the same type of thing as if we go and assist Bellevue or Kirkland or Medina on a call that where they need assistance, extra officers, backing officers, it's kind of the same thing. But we do a whole report anytime that we launch the drone, whether it's inside our city limits or outside, it's the same kind of process for the officer that they have to do as far as reporting goes.
Questions? Commander, thank you for joining us tonight.
Yes, thank you for moving me up. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate your service.
Thanks, ma'am.
Have a good night.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Moved by Councilmember Kovac, seconded by Councilmember Miramoto. Any any comments? Hearing none. Let's vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. And let's move on to section six, discussion. So starting with six, 6.1 with Council's committee update, and the first would be the the BAC. It's here. So Lisa, did we agree I was going to talk first on this?
Yeah, you you said you would like to, and I'm happy to to kick it off and you're welcome to join in if it if it's helpful. So staff has confirmed six residents that would volunteer to join us for the BAC this year. For folks that maybe aren't familiar, this group includes our mayor, some of our key staff and leadership, as well as our finance committee, which is members Wisner, Slivka and Muramoto. And then the six members, three of which are returning members to our BAC of residents and three of which are new members. And our first meeting is scheduled for Thursday. And so we're going to work on welcoming the group and providing some important background information into Clyde Hill and our budget, as well as covering important things like the mayor's strategic priorities that will help guide us in our 2025 budget development.
Let me add a little bit of finance director was explaining it mostly to the public, but for for the rest of council that's not part of the committee. So I'm looking, especially in this first meeting, for the BAC to provide us with with insight, direction and advice. I'm looking for them to provide more high level assistance in the following. I want the I want help on their help on understanding the budget and to make sure that they understand where the budget issues are. I want them to comment on the key priorities and provide some insight. I want them to consider the areas where we can review to improve our operations. And I'm looking for direction on operational improvement, including suggestions on structural revisions. I'm not, I don't want to limit their input, but I I think that we can utilize their experience and capability, not only in business or in service or as a resident, in ways that it can it can help us with a higher level part of the budget rather than having them go in and looking at the debts and the credits as the line item, line items that are really an expertise of staff that we already have, so they can help provide on some of that. So they, of course, will see the the draft budgets down the road in more detail. And but I'd like some input that we can use to help develop a more effective budget for the community. The meeting on Thursday will have a presentation that will explain current financial performance for 2024 to date. It'll provide some input on where we think we'll end up on this year. I think there's a lot of room for change and improvement on that, but it's a start and that's always an important piece. We'll show the key sources of revenue, key expenses, and there'll be certain we will provide comps from nearby communities so you can really get a sense of the of where we stand in terms of levels of revenue on various items and expenses and staffing. They'll get basic operational information, get a sense of the services provided by the city as well as those for which we use contractors or outside parties. And they'll also see the sustainability plan and the strategic priorities, which I look for that to review and we'll try to provide them for some background. So with that, I'm hopeful that will take this information, look this over, study, come back at our next meeting, which we're planning for late August, with input, suggestions, concepts and direction they would like us to look into that we can discuss. At that point, I'm hopeful we'll start seeing some of the initial pieces of the budget. And and then following that, I would expect in I think in September, we're talking about a working session for all of council. So.
Good question.
Yeah.
On the website, there's a notice of potential forum for August 1st. So is the intent that other council members?
No, it's not the intent at all.
Okay.
But it's just in case, so.
It's just in case somebody shows up and then we fill in? I don't get it.
Well, it handles in case there's a quorum without having to send somebody away necessarily, but no action is to be taken.
Okay, because there's no detail and it's the link doesn't go or there's no link that goes anywhere on that one. Okay. Yeah. Okay, and then with respect to the materials in the packet that you put together that are that are very good, thank you, I appreciate that. Is that something that we should send to the rest of the council in the interest of full disclosure since we're all going to have to vote on that?
I mean, eventually, you're welcome to. At this point in time, it's all open public documents. They've been sent out to the people that will be joining the meeting, most of which the documents, I wouldn't say are, there are things that everybody's already seen, our financial sustainability plan, our priorities that have already been reviewed by council.
There's one back in particular that you put together that's really helpful to give an overview.
PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
It might change before the meeting, but just FYI.
Yeah, if there's no reason why we shouldn't send it to council and let them see the presenting. For sure, we can see why I would agree with that. Look, it sounds like it's a really good packet of material and it would be good to have it up on the on the site.
Yeah.
And you know, if you only want to post like the morning of because you're doing lots of edits, that's fine. I'm seeing like having it up there means that, you know, it's the difference between, you know, six residents seeing it or other residents running across it, which I think I think is.
Yeah, it's part of the intent is to educate the residents about the challenges that we face. It's a really good document.
Glad to hear. I hope it's helpful.
There you have it. The the purpose of this was to give some background for the rest of council as to where we're going with Clyde. You can send that out. Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Rules and guidelines, I think Councilmember Wisner said that you had something.
Yeah, I have two agenda items. The first is that public disclosure documents that personal interests in public disclosure. And this is something that has been reviewed by the city attorney. And the the purpose of this is really to to start the discussion with respect to ethics about what, how we view public disclosures with respect to personal interests. And we have two different scenarios to discuss. The the first is area wide determinations. So when we as a council change cities' development regulations, we're making an area wide determination. And this issue came up ahead of a planning commission meeting when one of the commissioners was asking a question about the discussion of planning about rule about variance expiration change to the rules there because he had a variance that followed or that went with his property. And the determination from the city attorney was he could still weigh in on the variance discussion even though he was personally affected because at some point, the people that serve on the council and serve on the commissions are all residents and were all subject to potential issues. There are other issues that that have come up. For example, if we talk, if a council member complains about pickleball court noise, can they fully participate in decisions related to noise? And if a council member who lives on a private lane has an issue with changes to the municipal code relating to private lanes, is that fair game? So I'd like to ask, do we have consensus about the expectations for disclosure practices for area wide determinations? And do the rules and guidelines, which are asserted in the document in the pocket, reflect our intent?
Okay, well, let's open it up to council. Councilmember Kovac, any comments?
Madly scrolling to get to the to the part of the rules and guidelines so I can see what actually.
Question 5.1 and it's in the bottom of the.
6.1, thank you. Thank you for.
It's 5.1 and rules and guidelines and it's in the document. Sorry, apologies.
Yeah. So I I think this first, thank you. This makes sense to me because I think there's, you know, whether I look on Nextdoor or, you know, random communication that online, there are people who are, you know, making claims like, oh, you know, we'll just be explicit, right? So council member Sinwell, now council member Sinwell made comments about pickleball noise and posted something that was clearly this person has some agenda or conflict or or something. And so this provides clarity around council members should disclose. Oh, by the way, I have this. I want to make sure I'm tracking. So so it's so to the, for example, when we get around, you know, maybe in two weeks, we get around to voting on expiration of variances.
Right.
A council member who has variances on on their house would say, oh, disclosure, I have this many variances on my house. But we're making an area wide determination, so I'm going to go ahead and participate. It's literally just disclosure and then, hey, it's area wide, so let's go through and have the conversation. That makes a ton of sense to me. And I'm open minded about a language change to make that clear in the rules and guidelines. Thank you.
Remember Olson?
If if there is, if the council member does not disclose and and it's later found out, is there teeth in in the language?
That's a really good question. That's the next document. Yeah.
It's my own comment.
That's a member of your.
Yeah, I mean, my take is if if we didn't have opinions, we probably would not be in council because the reason we have, I mean, everybody has agendas, which is probably why we're serving. So I mean, I I think that this sets some some guidelines and boundaries, which is one of the absolute no concerns.
Councilmember Sinwell, you have any comments?
It all it all makes sense. It is strikes me interesting is that the pickleball thing has now come up many times, so a lot of publicity in that. And I I agree with and appreciate the work by councilman, the council member on this topic. And it's but one thing, right, is this would not preclude a council member if they wanted to recuse themselves, even even if legally you didn't have to do it. I'm I'm asking for affirmation, the council member could still recuse them. Like for me, for example, I could say if a pickleball thing came up, because I think I said on my website that I would recuse myself from that, from that vote, if a vote ever were to happen, that's still that's still an option. That's still an option of the council member, correct?
Absolutely. And rules and guidelines reflects that.
Okay, thank you.
My guess would be you can always recuse yourself if you feel it's appropriate. There's no reason why you can't, whether or not you whether or not it is a conflict or not, it's that's that can be a personal decision. All right, so.
Okay. Okay, so we're all on the same page, rules and guidelines, how per this, and I have to or right, or councilmember Olson and I need to work on the teeth. Okay. And and then the the second scenario was non area wide determinations, which are which are determinations for a single property. And currently, the planning commission has responsibilities for view and a hearing examiner has responsibilities for every other determination. Do we want to leave you determinations with the planning commission? Or do we want to move views from planning commission to the hearing examiner to make that consistent with the other appeals process?
Let me discuss. Tom, is is this a legislative, a code issue? And I think it's I think it's in the code that it goes to the planning commission. Therefore, would that be a code change?
It would would be a code change and I'd have to draft up an ordinance, but you could give me direction if you wished at this meeting and then I could have it for the next meeting.
Well, that was that question was really for clarification. That's good to know. So any comment? I'll go back.
Yeah.
That's my move Kovac.
I think this is a this is a nice catch. I think we had a public comment from a planning commissioner in support of this change. I support this change as well. It's not hard to have a scenario that gets tricky very rapidly. And if we have five planning commissioners and planning commissioner one has a view complaint against planning commissioner two, and then it goes, he goes runs through the process, then goes to planning commission. Well, you have two planning commissioners who'd have to recuse themselves. And then you're you're stuck with three planning commissioners who then have to, you know, choose between their colleagues. It would that just sounds nightmarish. I think that there is a bad practice from using a hearing examiner. I've watched in the hearing examiner videos and it's great to have a trained professional who does not live here and can clearly be above all the personalities and in detail. So I I think this would be a good change. It also to.
um, all the personalities and 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 details. So I I think this would be a good change. It also uh to the comment from um planning commissioner Wheeler uh creates far greater consistency. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh. Planning commission work costs the city nothing. What does the hearing examiner cost?
There is a cost. I don't know what it is off the top of my head. Uh. It is, it is also often passed on to the people who are bringing their, agreed, there's also a a an application fee for that that covers considerable amount, if not all of it.
So that answer is that it doesn't cost the city anything.
Right. Um, and for what it's worth, planning commission meetings do have a cost to the city with the city attorney that do. So
Right.
We can we can quibble. Right. I mean, there, that's that's a meeting that's gonna happen anyway and not necessarily. It it's it's a meeting that may or may not happen, or it's a meeting that's that's instigated by a complaint. It's not a naturally occurring meeting.
I I could offer some information if you'd like. Um, I just hired a hearing examiner. Um, I also took a, could issue permanent through a public hearing process. Cost was generally about thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, it was, of course, a hearing examiner that had no skin in the game, of course. Third-party neutral, so from not within the jurisdiction. Um, it was passed through directly to the applicant as far as the all bills and related charges. It took two weeks, uh, it was a very clear and legal legal decision that, in fact, I just received today, two weeks after the hearing on the sixteenth. It's always very clear and uh straightforward process.
Um, here you go. So uh, one more question. So um, so they uh brought up an an interesting question here is would would this hearing necessarily happen during a regularly scheduled planning commission meeting? Or is this a special meeting?
I could answer that as well. Uh, typically, uh, public hearings before the planning commission always occurs within the regular meeting. Of course, if there's workload issues or availability of planning commissioners and such, there could be special meetings scheduled for a particular purpose, uh, just like it would be for review of planning commission dra- uh, conference of plan drafts. There could be any number of reasons for a special meeting of planning commission, but indeed, it could be for a public hearing. However, typically, it can, the public hearings occur during the regular.
And.
I'm gonna shoot you.
My only question is, if it's the, um, sorry, the um the public hearings, does city attorney participate in that? I guess my my only concern is, do we have the the view of the the prospective city ordinances and so forth during the public hearing, during this, during the um the examiner meetings? Or is it literally two citizens with a hearing exam?
Can answer that as well.
And Tom has his hand up.
Yeah. Uh, typically, public hearings don't require a city attorney involvement. However, they often occur during a regular meeting, whether it's planning commissioner or council, and the ha- city attorney happens to be there, of course. Uh, a hearing examiner system, uh, hearing examiners are most often attorneys themselves. Uh, uh, there are others in my line of work that are hearing examiners that are well qualified and to run the process. Um, but uh, it it is constructed, whether it's a public hearing or a hearing examiner, public hearing, that staff gives a findings of fact, conclusions of law and recommendations. And then the proponent has a chance to speak. And then, of course, the public has a chance to support, oppose, comment. It's it's pretty straightforward. And then uh, then that hearing examiner or the planning commission will deliberate and then consider and then come back at whichever time they're ready to take their action on the.
Yeah. Um, I'll we'll get to uh council member Sinwell, but city attorney, I'll let you, you may have a comment right now.
Um, I just wanted to point out that uh the the kind of issues you're talking about are generally called quasi-judicial. Uh, emphasis on the judicial part. This is a situation where you're adjudicating the rights between parties. Uh, you're deciding, you know, you're taking in evidence, uh, you're allowing witnesses. Uh, you, it's a very structured process that uh requires or benefits from expertise of the hearing examiner. Want, although there may be a cost to it, which I I respect your concern on that. Uh, there's also a risk of having uh not inexperienced, non-judicial, non-judge commissioners trying to run essentially a courtroom. And you can end up with appeals and they cost even more money uh than having a hearing examiner.
I just wanted to add one one thing to that, to a comment. He he made, which was he got rid of the board of adjustment for almost exactly that reason. Sorry, that's.
Yeah, my only comment is I think it 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 says to me that we need to ensure that our ordinances view specifically are crisp so that when they come to a a judicial finding that there is no ambiguity in terms of what we want of city. So it kind of puts the onus back on us. Right. And I and I I think that's, you know, that that we need to work on.
It's council member Simo.
But I also just wanted uh to make sure that we check our existing contract with our hearing examiner and make sure that we don't need to add a scope of work.
No, thank you. House member Simo, I'm sorry, it's your, do you have any comments?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, for um, an attorney on the quasi judicial. I was thinking along the same lines, so you answered my question. The the other question, how often does this happen? How many instances in the last five years have we had the planning commission hold a view code hearing?
Do I dare jinx?
Is it for than one year?
We, I don't believe we've had one in the last five years. I think it's been longer than that. I think it's been closer to ten.
I mean. Back to mission public hearing?
For for a quasi-judicial hearing on the the tree board. I'm not being a little bit because they are contentious and like the and all the things there. Uh, we do have one potentially.
Is the answer infrequent? Is that the answer?
Very, yeah, very infrequently.
Okay. And and what I liked about the planning commission's recent action is that I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, uh councilman Olson, who's usually is on, I think, they they um I think a step plan on a quasi judicial hearing, correct? Or they're at least thinking about it.
So I repeat the question.
I thought the planning commission was underway of developing a step process for a quasi judicial hearing activity. I thought that was on their agenda.
Right. Uh, we we talked about, uh, they talked about code enforcement. And and that's kind of up on the docket, so as as it may relate to that, that's a possibility.
They were trying to update their rules and guidelines to address this. Attorney Brubaker, is that maybe you want to weigh in?
Yeah, that's that's what it is. They uh, they had existing rules and guidelines, but they were actually targeted towards quasi judicial hearings and not towards more area-wide legislative hearings. So I got involved actually in uh revising the steps for just a more normal legislative hearing. The steps already in place for quasi judicial are are fine. The 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 larger question is should a typically legislative uh local body, you know, body made up of local residents like the planning commission or the city council for that matter? Um, are they best off acting in the role, a a judicial role? Or is it better to hand that to the hearing examiner?
Anything else, council member Sinwell?
No, no.
Um, I have one, one question. The first one, I had two questions. One got answered already on the number. The second is, if uh, if there is, if the planning commission takes on this active hearing, do they have, is there a charge? In other words, would we be moving from something they they just come in, represent themselves, have a hearing in front of the planning commission? Costs them nothing, or do they have to now go make a hearing examiner fee? If there is uh and if they, if we move it over to the hearing exam?
So again, there are a set of fees for uh the whole appealing the view sun-like code.
Anything given to the planning commission?
Uh, it's to include some of that, so it would be worth analyzing that to make sure that it still was sufficient and.
Well, we can change, we can change those fees and update them. I was just wondering whether we're suddenly putting resident in a position where they get something for nothing, now they're paying two thousand dollars. On the other hand, if they have to pay two thousand dollars, it's in a set to settle it before you have to go to the hearing exam. So there's, that goes both ways.
I'm pretty sure you need to pay something when you put in a form view.
Okay.
It's not inexpensive.
Okay, so either way, they're paying something. Okay, that's, that was. Um. Well, I guess the 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 question would be whether this is something we should regardless of how often it's used, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't do something that makes sense and clarify. And if if there is a desire, we can move forward towards updating the ordinance.
It's timely. It's definitely timely. If we were to make a change, now would be the time to do it.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we update the the view ordinance so that um, any view disputes would go to to a hearing examiner.
Right now. Okay, so there's a motion um that any uh the view ordinance be amended so that any disputes that would normally, that would previously have gone to the planning commission would now go to the hearing examiner. For judi- judification. Uh, motion paid by uh, so, so member, please, let me finish again. And then uh, seconded by council member Olson.
So I trust you'll need to put together an ordinance to affect this quote code change. Um and so, so is the motion to direct staff to work with Tom?
Yeah. And you, yes. I wonder if Courtney got all that.
Yeah, my only, but back to you, the the one point you made, I think is 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 pretty low. I um, I'm a little bit concerned about, I don't want to preclude discussions, maybe that that the fine line. Discussions versus sending it off immediately, any disputes immediately going to adjudication. I mean, is there?
The process is so large.
Well, I, yeah, I think that's my take too, but I I don't want to preclude any open discussions in the community about about those things, right? Because I think, because on- once it goes, you know, again, I've not listened to a lot of hearing. I would like to make sure that we as a council understand some of the issues that are going on and then preclude that because it is like, oh, yeah, there's two, off it goes. Um, so.
I believe that if residents can't resolve it, then they would take the next step.
Would that necessarily mean maybe it just, you know, maybe it comes here, it could mean, I just don't want, I don't want to preclude the discussion between residents to immediately go to here. I mean, I just don't want it. I I think I'm concerned about skipping that step and saying, oh, you got a dispute. Here's the dollar figure, right? Go there, right? So I'd like to have some way, if possible, to mitigate the number of items that go on all whatever we've had in the past five years. But if there's a, if there's a dispute, still find a way to resolve it between the neighbors. And then uh have some visibility to the council that we've got some some disputes going on. And not that we're gonna fix it, but at least have visibility and then have it go into to a formal process or something.
Yeah, but I think that there are disputes that happen all the time between neighbors that never come to us and shouldn't come to us.
True. Yeah, and I'm not saying that all disputes should come, but right now, we kind of have, we have, we give visibility when it goes to the planning commission. I guess that's what I'm saying, right? Because we can see that it becomes now becomes kind of a a a public, a public dispute. Um, are we going to eliminate that level of discussion uh by skipping that step? I mean, what's the, i- is there a way that?
An escalation, right?
Well, I don't think. Yeah, it's, it's, I think it's not an escalation. I just want to make sure that we have visibility about what, because again, I think that the few rights, the few laws that we're gonna put into effect over the next few years are critical, and I'd like to make sure that we don't cut off public discussion. That's really.
Yeah, so so completely agree with you. I think that for for what it's worth right now, council has visibility on hearing examiner stuff. It shows up in the administrator's weekly report. It's how we go to go and and listen. So there is visibility. And um, at the city's website under, you know, neighborhood matters, community resources. It is the initial step for the complainant to make all reasonable efforts to find a voluntary solution with the neighbor. It goes on in detail. And if after exhausting all reasonable approaches, the view obstruction matter is still unresolved, then there is a mediator and then and then and then. So like, there's, there's a huge process. And so this is really like the last resort.
All right, we have, we have two people want to speak. Um, Tom, you, you're up first.
I was just going to uh say what uh council member Hakamovich just said, that there is, for this view protection, there is an established res- escalation resolution process already in place. The other thing I I wanted to say, and pardon me, uh, council member Sinwell, if I'm getting in in front of you, but um the, there's enough going on in that ordinance. I was just looking at it briefly, that I'll, what I bring back to you at the next meeting or the next time it comes up, it's likely that you may have thoughts or changes you want to make. And so I would say there may be, uh, you may not, I mean, you may see it introduced and then make further changes and wait a meeting or two before it gets passed uh completely.
Council member Simo?
Yeah, I would just, um I echoed what councilman, I would echo what councilman Miramoto said, notwithstanding what the other council members said. I, but I, on this one, I would say that this happens so infrequently that, and we're when we look in the materials later today, there's a, there's a memo about all the work that we have to do and the backlog and the resources and the but, and the constraints on time and resources. And and we're, and we're talking about making a change is something that is pretty rare. So I think in I, for those reasons, I I'm just not, I'm not convinced this is time well spent for something that's a rarity. It may be a better process perhaps, but on the margins incrementally, the opportunity cost is is just not, the squeeze is just not worth the juice. So that's how I feel about it. Just, it just happens too rarely to really make a change at this time.
Actually, I'm not, I'm not sure I agree. I get the point that it's rare. I think if it's the right thing to do, then this is the perfect time to make the change.
I think it creates.
Because you're not, I think you're not infringing on the public, you're just correcting a pro- a process.
Those are more planning commission capacity, but you're saying.
Yeah. If if there's anything to that, I I get, I get where we're going with this. So.
No, my, well, my point was I acknowledge the process may be better. That's debatable. But I argue that based on a memo from the city today, there's a hundred and one things that are on the backlog. And we're talking about something that happens, what, once every three years? Okay, I, it's hard for me to look the residents in the eye and say, yeah, I'm gonna spend time on something that happens once every three years, and it's a better process, which it might be. But but I got all these, so I I don't understand the priorities. It's a priority discussion, Mayor. It's not, it's not a, it's not a process issue, it's a priority issue.
Okay. Point made. Good. Point's hard. I'm sorry, Dean.
So uh, I'm thinking this is mostly a process thing. Uh, but I just want to bring up, so we're two weeks away from our next council meeting, so we're about a week towards a packet. Uh, I think it's great. I I mentioned that we have one probably at the mediation stage right now. So potential timeliness could be really good. Uh, question kind of for attorney Brubaker or Mr. Jensen as far as it's Title seventeen. There's no need to actually do anything through the planning commission for this sort of a change. This is just changing how they're adjudicated uh asking, because I don't.
Well, I I don't think this is something that is a development regulation that has to go to the planning commission. Eric, what are your thoughts?
I agree. Yeah.
So we have a, we have a motion. So we have a, we have a motion, uh, and a second, we've had discussion, let's move to the vote. Uh, all those in, in favor of uh, of drafting an updated ordinance to replace the, the planning commission as the adjudicator on view disputes with the hearing examiner, all those favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, uh, motion passes four to one.
And I have one more rules and guidelines.
Okay, then we'll go to the next.
Okay, so the updated rules and guidelines document is in the packet, and I don't know if we need a motion to approve the two changes.
Didn't know if you wanted to go through the changes with council here tonight, and then uh, if everybody had nods and all that, we'll put on the consent for two weeks from now.
Got it, okay, thank you. And the two changes that are in here are, we put the proclamations language that we talked about a meeting or two ago. And with the city administrators' help, we simplified the process. Um, it's section, the page thirteen, it's section three six.
I'm sorry.
Three point six. That's the. Oh yeah, it's that, okay.
Proclamations.
So proclamations are issued by either the council or the mayor. Proclamations issued by the council have to be voted on by the council, the mayor can still issue proclamations and the council takes no action. And the general guideline for proclamations is that they fulfill a city programmatic requirement, or they relate to an issue of importance for the community as a whole. And then the second item that we talked about and made no changes, oh, sorry.
Yes. This is the guideline, essentially in voting, in seconding the motion to consider a proclamation or voting on it. Council members uh, make a judgment call as to whether it fulfills a programmatic requirement or is, is important. I'm getting to your, to your, you know, teeth, recurring teeth question on this one. So it's like, for example, we had one, uh, the, the proclamation regarding uh, Mr. Kormatsu. With this in place, we could look at each other and say, no, we believe this is important and significant, we should do this.
That, that Mr. Kormatsu one is an example of the mayor issued that proclamation, we, the council did, so the mayor can still issue proclamations.
Sure, okay, yeah, yeah, fine, have, have there been a council?
Yeah, have there been a council, and yeah, we will let each other decide, yeah.
So this is a guideline and, and council, individual council members decide as they vote.
Right.
Good.
Okay. And then the second issue in here, um, we talked about, our council member Olson, the administrator and I talked about if we should make any changes um, to um, council meeting rules for public participants to determine if people can yield their time or not to another speaker, and we decided that it was getting too convoluted, so we left it at comments generally should be limited to three minutes unless a greater or shorter length of time is requested and approved, which implies that you cannot yield your time to somebody else. We thought it was clear enough. All right, so does, are we okay with the proclamations change? Okay.
I have a question though, I didn't, I thought this was, didn't, have we made changes just without a vote? But just kind of all rules and guidelines that didn't necessarily need to be.
Not when we went through and looked to see, these two changes hadn't been uh, approved by council.
Yeah, but I, well, but I don't know that, I mean, I'm, I'm. This is our own internal procedures, do we need to approve as a council, I mean, do we need to take a formal vote on it, or it's just not our head? I, I, that's my question, I didn't remember ever voting on rules and guidelines changes, because it's our document.
Yeah.
I did realize we needed to vote on it, and that's just my question.
Now we can vote on it.
Yeah, I think we can, but I, I don't even know that we needed to vote on it ever.
I think we have been voting on it.
Okay, no, just a question.
This, this was, this was to keep you from sneaking.
Shut up, role. Do we want to vote on whether we want to vote?
So we'll put this revised version into the consent agenda in two weeks.
Okay.
Great.
All right, I, I do have a, uh, there's a typo in um, three point three, agenda preparation. Bottom of the first paragraph, it says uh, something that uh, city administrator explains the necessity and receives a majority vote of the council to add the item, so it's, should be vote instead of vote, okay.
Oh, oh, yeah, sorry, okay.
That's word check. All right, one, one last committee item here, uh, I don't know if this is land use to issue. This is regarding trees, there was.
There's another rules and guidelines.
Was there another?
Yeah.
I thought we, sorry.
Beneficial.
But I have rules and guidelines that limit the rules and guidelines.
You go. All right, I'm sorry, no, beneficial private interest, which is the, the second link in six dot one. Um, there is, because there, there was discussion around ethics code and conflicts and frankly, appearance of fairness. Um, this is where Tom, I'm sure is twitching right now. Appearance of fairness is a concept that comes up only for quasi judicial issues. If I understand technically, there have been multiple times when residents have said, oh, but that doesn't look fair. They have an issue, and so uh, I went looking after a conversation with council one, and it turns out there's another city that has, that attempted to address this. Um, I, uh, this document here, beneficial private interest in legislation, um, has links to the MRSC documents. The gist is they um, the city of C-TAC adopted language to prohibit council members from having a personal financial interest in legislation. This is something that um, I think in general, one would hope that council members would recuse themselves, but this was codified in a particular way. I found this, I'm, I'm offering this to the council for discussion around whether the current language and rules and guidelines is sufficient, or option B, uh, we want to further codify this and prohibit council members from having a personal financial interest in legislation. And I'm not going to read the rest of it out loud, I wanted to give the high altitude view. Um, I'm, I'm open minded about this, this was just in terms of shaking the tree and figuring out what are the things we can do to help based on the feedback we've heard today, thank you.
Um, okay. Well, I guess we'll run around and see what any, what the rest of council thinks about it, I'll start with you, council member Olson.
Um, where's the teeth? And if, if you don't, you know, if someone doesn't, you know, recuse themselves, if they've got financial interest, or the other council members determine or suggest that there's a financial interest and, and that council member does not recuse him or herself, um, what are the repercussions? Does it say in here? Uh, the, uh, I think the city of C-TAC has their own enforcement language um, separate from this. I think that as council one said, we are still working on our enforcement language. And so this would plug into, you know, essentially a violation, this would, would plug in to uh, whatever additional enforcement language you have. Right now, the rules and guidelines have a censure option. So if it is determined that a council member has violated the rules and guidelines, there's a process wherein two other council members go to, I think, the city attorney and say, hey, we think there's been a violation, there's a conversation, and eventually there's a vote to censure. So that's the teeth right now. So we have a baseline of teeth and then additionally, good.
Right, but we have a document that city attorney did for us when I was on vacation, and it's still in my inbox, um, from July through, that he sends both of us. That's the proposed teeth that we need to review.
We have baseline teeth, and then we have teeth plus plus.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have, in principle, I have no, no problem with the language, I just get concerned that we, are we, are we wrapping rules and regulations against something that's not likely to happen, then I, I understand, it could be possible, Scott.
Council member Sinwell, you have a comment?
Yeah, the option B would be the way that, I liked the language, uh, think that transparency and disclosure is fundamental, so the more we can put in here, and then I recognize the project on getting additional teeth, but I'd be a fan of option B on this one.
Um, city attorney, I think that you wanted to offer some, some caveats on this based on your reading.
Yeah, I have a, I have a number, number of thoughts, just kind of as a baseline. You're, uh, when, when you're dealing with the city council, you guys are all elected by the community, and you really can't be fired unless there's a a legal motion in court to have you removed from office, so since there's not strong teeth, there's no possible for real strong teeth, there's censure is available. You could also like pull somebody off of committees, you could sort of uh, defang their influence as a council member, but you can't really stop them, um, any, any one of you, uh, they're, the way you're controlled is if you're reelected or not. The uh, problem that I saw with the C-TAC language, um, first is, it's not, well, it's the challenge, I think, the C-TAC language is the definition of remote interest only involves contracts. And the purpose of that ordinance was to um, add another layer of conflict of interest, um, where, excuse me. Um, if, if the uh, council member has a, a financial interest, and in other words, financial interest is broader than a contractual interest. So unless you define what con- does and does not constitute a financial interest, then you have an undefined uh, potential violation that uh, I'm like to say can be used as a sword as well as a shield. There's no defined standard of when, when do you go from, when does a council member have a financial interest under the C-TAC language? So I don't, I, there's nothing wrong with adding in that extra layer, but it needs to be thought through and defined. Because it's not defined in the C-TAC language.
Well, I'm looking at the document, um, the proposed ethics document in my inbox, and we have the same problem, I believe, with the Mercer Island language that, that we, that I was proposing to pick up too, where how do you, how do you actually go back and, and prove any of this?
It seems like at some level it ends judgment call.
Right.
That if four of your colleagues believe.
Yeah, that's right.
That, that's here, but the, so the, the thing about this language, like with all, today this is, you know, I'll, I'll use loaded language here. Um, essentially, it's, it's, it's a sword, city attorney's language, it's, it's weaponizable, uh, it enables witch hunt.
It does, and at the meantime, I'm looking at what's in the C-TAC language versus what's in this language in the stalking that you haven't seen yet. And it seems like there's got to be some merge, yeah.
Let's let council members, Sinwell, speak, let's talk. Go ahead.
I, yeah, thank you, I looked at, I happened to look at this issue like, I don't know, six months ago, and I don't know if Lisa, you or Dean have looked at the city of Kirkland language. It hones in on financial interest, it hones in on annual disclosures by council members, and of all the, of all the language I was able to get a hold of, I, I sort of gravitated toward the Kirkland language as being thoughtful and reasonable.
Tom is smiling because I think that we could like keep on going around and around, which makes sense, but I'll look at city Kirkland too.
Well, what, it, it seems like there's a consensus that would, would what um, this revision, or this, this new, this rule is trying to accomplish is appropriate.
Yes.
And desired, and the question becomes is, is it properly defining? And uh, the teeth would fall, but um, and so what I would propose is that that goes back to rules and guidelines, and they come up with the rest of the next answer, so we can proceed whether we use, we have guidelines out of Kirkland or or, or Covington or wherever.
Let's fall into what you have from your legislation, it sounds great to me, thank you.
These rules and guidelines are going to be an everlasting gobstopper in content. Um, so we're going to. Wait a minute, but, council member Sinwell, you still have, did we cut you off, or do you have another comment?
No, I'm sorry about that, I'm done.
Okay. Fair enough, I'm sorry.
As I said, before we go to six two, ask for a bio break. Um, I'm not ready, because I think, oh, unless you want to finish off six one, this.
Everything, I'd like to, this should be, this should be quick, so um, the tree issue is not necessarily land use, it was, it was several months ago, council member Kamovic and council member Sinwell were going to go out and serve to meet with the public to get their uh, opinions about trees, how, how we proceed, so we'd get some public input before we started today. And I guess I would like to know where we stand on that.
Um, the very short version of my report of views, we met, there are a bunch of residents who have strong opinions. We listened to them, and then we looked at that really long queue of work uh, around development regulations, land use, Title seventeen. And this is at the bottom of that list right now, and so we, we noted the residents who had opinions, who I think would be very willing to put in more time and energy into this, and we just don't know, I, I think we have, we have other work to put ahead of that. That's, that's my take. Council member Sinwell, I'm not sure if you've.
Yeah, council member Sinwell is that appropriate.
Yeah, that's, that's accurate.
So at this point, we're, this suggests that council is looking, is there, are there any of the comments before I pop in my opinion here, when I'm hearing it, I think I need it. So it sounds like council was looking to just, they're interested in doing it, but it's at the bottom. It's, it's dropped down in the priority list at this point for other things that we need to complete, it wouldn't run through planning commission.
Yep.
So, all right, that's, that's the consensus of council, then that's what we're doing. Okay, now we can stop, we'll take a break, can we take five minutes? Get back in there in six minutes.
So, Dean, you clearly did get the memo and actually.
That's because I'm pretending it's summer with all those clouds.
Clouds come out.
Exactly.
Evan is here and ready when you guys get there.
You know, one of the things that learned in. Sometimes you have but it, you know. Because you just can't. Yeah. Uh, this is, uh, you're going to pass the vouchers and the payments from the city and part of the consent.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, thanks.
Sounds good.
Said yes to it. Um, is there, um, I don't really have too much to.
Hey, do it, Er.
Report, uh, if there's a liaison, there is, is there a lot?
Did you really?
When I can just talk about.
That's a crazy thing, I don't. Well, you want to, if, if you're talking about it.
It's not a real big, I don't really necessarily want to talk about it, it's just, just, just to let everybody know, and they probably, everybody knows, but I'm, I'm just maybe send back.
I think we're going to vote on that, I'm assuming, two weeks.
Yeah, I.
Oh, I'm talking better.
No, I'm, I'm fine with, no, I, you know, but just, I think everybody already knows where, you know, the variance, you know, with was passed.
Yeah, it means. So far.
Yeah.
But it's like. Yeah. All under vector, but I can't.
Yeah. I was pleased.
Taken through. I'm pleased. At least it gets done.
Yeah.
It is. This is. I actually like the one that gives. There's a non agreement. That's the one.
But you do like it.
I do like that.
I think they're different.
Then the city won't have to get anything. If they can do it.
Yeah, we shouldn't. Rest. I agree. Things like that. Yes.
That's good. To be honest. Okay. So we do it.
Yeah, I know. But I'm not. It doesn't really have. Anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do voted in. This is just. A Birmingham.
Start of showing the.
Oh, proof. The content agenda for the. Next that we're paying this. All right, just like actually. Oh, yeah. Yeah. That was.
Doesn't quite. I have the opportunity to sprawl.
This is this was my desk. It's tied to. All right. We're back. And we're moving on to item six point two. Actually, there's there's two pieces to this section. There they land use code update process as well as an ordinance regarding existing items that could be that are referred to the planning commission. Could you myself?
If you want, I can offer context on discussion that got us to this process change.
Yeah, go ahead. I I think I was.
Okay, so so these comments are are directed to the three council members who were not at the land use committee meeting. And if I get it wrong, just that's, you know. So we had this great land use committee meeting and mayor was there as well. During the discussion, two two things of 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 interest. One of them is there is a there's an item that the council referred to the planning commission in January of two thousand twenty three related to substantial remodel. So we we sent that off. And there were basically two pieces of code change to the substantial remodel code. One was essentially what's the threshold? And the other was, I think, the the language, if you bring up the January two thousand twenty three packet, the language was a change that codifies a practice that is already implemented by staff relating to, hey, when you do a substantial remodel, don't bother bringing your stormwater equipment up today. So those are the the two things. And during discussion at the land use committee, at the land use committee meeting, it emerged that this item is no longer a great topic of discussion for the planning commission for for two reasons. One is the the larger policy concerns around changing the the threshold for substantial remodel. We we there was there was a desire to do it for a certain reason. We can get into that, and it seems that that reason may have disappeared. And the other is that with some additional digging, turns out that there really isn't a stormwater exemption for a substantial remodel. If you look elsewhere in the administrative code of the city, it actually says, oh, when you're doing substantial remodel, here's actually how you determine what you should do for stormwater. So we sent it to the planning commission with two changes, both of which seem to have collapsed in terms of policy need and ten accuracy. And that led to, from my point of view, that led to a discussion of, hey, what's the actual process? And does it make sense to pull things back? Which is what this agenda bill discusses.
Is that is that fair? Yeah, I'm I'm caught up to where we really should have been. From the first place before I said, I'm not. I was I was confused.
I'm just I'm trying to write context for council one, two, and.
Yeah. So there's really. In my my, I'll let you jump in. If there's anything you want to add to this, and then I'll make something.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, I think it's really two things. And so substantial remodel is a good example of something that enough time is elapsed and enough things have changed that potentially makes sense to pull it back. The other, I think, sort of grouping of items is there have been a couple of items referred from the council to the planning commission in the last year that have been sort of discussed briefly at council, but haven't been. There has not been code developed, proposed draft code developed, and it has not really been vetted by staff. And if if planning commission were to take those items up at this point, staff would really be starting at close to zero, going off of a couple of minutes of discussion and trying to put something together that we thought addressed the issues raised by council, but maybe didn't. So I think the recommendation is to pull items like that back and work on them more with land use committee with council and then refer them to planning commissions. That planning commission has a full picture of what the policy guidance is.
And and I might add that ultimately, the goal is planning commission can do a more effective job if council is clear on what they're looking for when they want to send an item to the planning commission. It would it's it would save a lot of time, and it would allow them to work on behalf of what the issue that counts. Now, the the reason council wants them to look. And many of these items either it's taken time and the issues have changed or really weren't very well defined for them. So if we do that, that would allow planning commission to more effectively do the work we want to do their homework, send something back to council. That right? They you agree? Couple of those. So that became both a process and a desire to pull items back so that council can make those decisions. And hopefully, this is a process that can become more efficient for everybody. One of the key goals is staff would take the input from council, which would come via the land use committee first. And then they would be able to identify to prepare code that would reflect that change. So you're you're not giving them options A, B, C, D. You're giving them, this is what council wants. This is the way it's been determined. Council's in agreement. Now you go do your work, and then they will come back with with homework and decisions. But it'll that'll reflect that direction that they got. And I think that's a much more efficient process. And well, I'm hopeful it can even save time all along, whether it does or doesn't. I think you end up with better answers and more success as a as a team. So there's the there's two pieces in two areas in here. One's a motion to recall certain items, and you've gone through those items and determined the ones that we want. You would want to recall back to council.
Yes, the ones I would recommend are substantial remodel. There's lights, one on lights. There's one on communication facilities.
Signs.
Signs. I thought that had not been referred.
Well, I'm sorry, I was looking at the the write up you had in the resource where you had listed the others as well.
Oh, yeah, that one hasn't been referred. We're still.
Yeah, it was it was just those three.
Those three.
So. Oh, let me get a motion.
Okay.
So what 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 we're looking for is a motion. Do we call client and municipal code seventeen dot O six O dot O three O on damage, destroyed, demolished or remodel buildings and structures? This is substantial. Seventeen dot O eight dot one six O lights and chapter seventeen dot five O communications facilities from the planning commission review refer back to the council and use committee for further development. Clarification. So to have a motion. So move move by councilmember Miramoto a second.
Second, but I have a question.
Yeah, that's kind of thing by councilmember Whistler. So let's have a discussion while you start.
Okay, so first question. If when you talk about the the diagram and being able to give the planning commission more of their feedback about what the council wants when they refer code, is there something that's sitting that we're not calling back or the planning commission doesn't have enough clarity? So they're not going to be as effective as they can. And I guess I guess what I'm ultimately asking is shouldn't we pull everything back to make sure that we've given the planning commission enough feedback so that they can effectively do their job?
No. Yeah, I would I would.
I could answer from the point of view of staff when we were reviewing the the items that were had currently been reviewed to the planning commission. So the expiration of variance is the other one where they've already met the one time and were pretty close to. They just approved it at their last meeting. And then the other one was code enforcement where that particular land use code change had been vetted by the city attorney. And there had been a lot of discussion already at the land use committee. So it had kind of already followed that process, whereas the ones that we had identified before, either for a policy change or maybe hadn't gone through the whole process, those were the ones that we were recommending to pull back.
And then on the ones that we will that are anything that that's sitting at council that the diagram that we've got, and maybe I'm jumping ahead here. Diagram that we've got just covers the case where things go to the planning commission. It doesn't cover the case if we decide that we're going to make changes in council and not refer to the planning commission.
Yeah.
True, okay.
At the land use committee meeting, we were asked to kind of provide an update diagram for the land use code change process. And so this is an update to the two thousand twenty two memo. Obviously, understanding that you might be taking any action, it might change some things, but this is just for where we are now.
Okay, I can say it's a it's a pretty easy change. If we need to to add an option to keep it with council, we can make that change. Okay, and I have more questions on this, but I'll hold since we have a motion.
No, I mean, we're in discussion here. And councilmember Seymour? Any questions on this?
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, first of all, it seems to make sense to recall the items. I I do have a threshold question about the intent. Is the intent going forward through this org chart is to for the at the end of the day, will council come up with a sort of a binary option? Says, okay, we recommend X and only X, and then give that to the planning commission. But the reason I ask is that oftentimes, you know, planning commission is there to debate alternatives, you know, option X and option Y. In this new scenario that we're talking about, is our intent to provide the planning commission with a particular direction without option B and option C? Is that is that kind of where we're headed? I I'm just need some clarity on that. Or or not, maybe I'm just mistaken.
Well, councilmember, the I think the the direct, the the goal is to provide the planning commission with enough information so they understand what cap what the what council is looking to change and why, so they can do their work. Ideally, you would have mostly a single ordinance tied to it. And then planning commission gets that information and then expands or or does their job and goes into the detail. I'm I my feeling is that is that in the by pulling these items back, council can can determine items, can can determine the direction they want taken. This should be primarily direction oriented. But planning commission likes to work with an ordinance, so it tie you tie that direction into an ordinance. And then they would revise it more. Is that accurate, Mike?
Yeah, that's accurate. And I would add, I think there there are many situations where council is considering, you know, one or more than one option, in which case, you know, there it could be totally appropriate to outline that and provide those options to planning commission. I think the point is that those options would have been seen by council, would have been discussed by council, and then given to the planning commission versus what's happening now sometimes, which is where staff ends up developing those options sort of offline after council has talked about it, and then planning commission looks at it. And then council ends up saying, we never saw these options until it came back to us.
We didn't want this.
I think an example of that would be at the last planning meeting where, you know, they got to an answer. But city, I think the city staff provided, what, eight different options? And it it did get out. They were trying to do the planning commission a favor, but okay, so I understand the ideal mayor. I think that's an admirable goal, but I guess we all recognize there may be outcomes where the planning commission will be presented with a variety of options. And the intent is there is for them to sort that out with the public and to come back to us with a recommendation. That's all I got.
Uh, city attorney. Tom, you have.
Yeah, I just I I want to try to provide a little bit of clarity. I think admin is trying to get a better understanding of the exact concerns the council's wanting to address before it goes to the planning commission so that they can so that the planning commission can have a better understanding of of the issue that the council is concerned about. But the planning commission is a legislative, independent legislative body created by this council. And when they get a an issue, they take public, they provide notice, they take public comment. And there may be iterations that the planning commission or the public asks the planning commission to consider. So it it it's an iterative process. There would be no point in having a plan commission if the council were to say, we want you to do this X, Y, Z to this development regulation. Then 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 the council may as well just become the planning commission and 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 eliminate it. So it goes through a series of layers. So I think the detail at the front from the council is good. It does not mean options won't be considered that haven't been considered by council at the planning commission level. And then that will come back to the council as a recommendation for final action. And the council at that point doesn't have to accept the planning commission's recommendation. But but the planning commission also doesn't have isn't doesn't exist to take direction, specific direction from admin or the council.
I I get your point, and I don't I I agree. I hope everyone else does. Any other any other comment? So we have a in this case, we have a motion on the table to recall the three items that were mentioned. So let's vote on that motion. All those in favor, say aye. My flag. Pose. Motion passes unanimously. So are there any other questions regarding the the flow chart or any of that, or anything else?
Well, get to add.
I think you have more on the flow chart.
Um, how often do, on title seventeen changes result in external review? So item eight on the chart. So if item eight staff forwards results for external review, how often to? Um, title seventeen changes result in that, in that.
Yeah, I have information on that. Apologies. Just in case you're gonna ask. Talk amongst yourselves. Let me get it back to you on that, but. In a nutshell, though, small modifications to, uh, land use codes in the municipal code don't rise to that level of external. Um, apart from the notification to state commerce of your land use regulation updates. It's not a matter of their review and comment, but rather your notification to them, your intent to adopt. Um, and so the best thing to do is instead of trying to kind of over explain everything to you, I can provide you information on that.
Well, I just looked at that as like an other explanation. I'm trying to figure out how to make this process not, not look quite so daunting.
Um, actually, I, I hear you. I, I like that. It, it really lays things out nicely. But, um, but as far as, you know, what falls in that external column, I, I definitely want to provide you the correct.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, okay. And then the, the other question I have is, is we've gone back and forth about stormwater. And is stormwater part of the substantial remodel? Is stormwater exempt? So. We, we've treated it as exempt. It's not exempt. So when did we figure that out? And are there any unknown implications? Of having people done remodels where they should have done stormwater work that didn't happen?
You, you're asking, have there been some that have been missed? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, are there people that did remodels where they should have done stormwater updates where we didn't have them do stormwater updates? And I'm concerned that there are people out there that didn't do stormwater updates. Now you're shaking your heads that we have people that didn't do stormwater updates.
We follow the guidelines that, uh, were adopted after the last, uh, SEPA permit, I'm sorry. MP, uh, Department of Ecology, MPDES permit back in two thousand and fifteen or sixteen. And so then the guidelines and the rules that we've established for when, uh, the amount of, uh, impervious, uh, surface has to have been increased. No, we've been following, following those guidelines.
Yeah, there's, uh, in the Clyde Hill, uh, building permit guide, um, there's a kind of three categories that say what, when, uh. Stormwater is, is required. And I wish Rich was here to answer this question, but he was, had said like, they've been following. All of this has been applied consistently.
Okay.
Yeah.
I found the, um.
Yeah, okay.
I found the answer to the, uh, question of what goes to external review. I can read quickly. So any amendment to development regulations requires state agency notice. Development regulations are defined in the RCW statute as. Development regulations or regulation means the controls placed on development or land use activities by a county or city, including but not limited to zoning ordinances, critical areas ordinances. Shortly master programs, official controls, planned unit development ordinances, subdivision ordinances, and binding site plan ordinances, together with any amendments thereto. A development regulation does not include a decision to approve a project permit application as defined in RCW thirty-six seventy B O two zero. Even though the decision may be expressed in resolution ordinance of the legislative body of the county or city.
Do you have something? Yeah, I didn't, I had a couple of questions on this one. So we actually. It's a status question. I went back to look at the January twenty-three thing and there, there was an item in there that says. There were five chapters that were already approved by the planning commission and council. These chapters will undergo SEPA determination review by Department of Commerce. Once the other chapters are also ready, we haven't done any other chapters are also ready. Like, were those, are those changes just kind of sitting waiting? Or did we send them on? Is there a reason to hold on to them? Is there a reason to send them?
Are you referring to the conference of plan chap- chapters?
No, uh, referring to the development regulations that were voting that, that the planning commission and council had approved by January twenty. If you bring up the January two thousand twenty-three.
I, I, I was not familiar with that, so.
Yeah. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe there are a large amount of sorts. Is there any reason not to send them on? Uh, we can do it once a year, right?
No, you can do them as, as they're approved. Um, it's the docketing of the annual amendment that's once a year. But any development regulations that you pass, typically you, you package, I mean, you send them off because commerce gets a little crazy when they get bits and pieces sent to them, but. But, you know, you can do them as work. Now, some of those, uh, if I, I'm now trying to recall, I, I wasn't directly involved, but. Some of those are so minor, I don't think they rise the level of what I've just mentioned. And that's RCW, so.
It's gone by the notices, Anderson.
Right. So I think the best thing would be to council member, would be for, for us to take a look again at that list and see if it rose to this, uh, threshold. And if it is, you know, go on. If it isn't, then, you know, inform me fix.
Good way. And so my intention was, you know, we, we had this body of small code changes that were made, I believe in twenty twenty-two. And then we had some additional code changes referred to planning commission in early twenty twenty-three by council. So my intention has been to work through those. I think. If we can, we've done, we'll do expiration of variance soon, hopefully. And then, um, code enforcement, I believe, will probably have done in the next couple of months, given how the conversation is going. So at that point, I think we'll have been caught up with everything. At that point, I think we can send along anything that we have that's been.
Um, for the reminder, there was a conversation, part of the bookend of the conversation that kicked off this, uh, item six two. Um, we talked about the planning commission work plan and there was a candid discussion around how the work plan isn't really under control of the planning commission. Cause it kind of depends on which work the staff gets done when. And so I, I, I offer that in terms of the work coming out of calling these items is. Now there's work on land use committee and staff to go and actually create a document. For the planning commission says, here's this matter for your consideration. We're looking for a recommendation. And my, and my understanding from walking out of the meeting is that the process is, we get that document, staff works on that document, it comes to council.
Exactly. Only in use, staff and land use, yep.
And then that document, council refer, like council refers to the planning commission, the exact, like there, there's no, there's no longer any ambiguity or any, oh, but we meant this. And this is what went over there. There's the, the document that goes to the planning commission, the, is what the council votes on. As part of the referral.
That's what I understand.
Why you agree?
If, if, is that clear? Is there a clarification, Mike?
Well, I think the proposed code that goes to the planning commission is, I think staff will still put together a memo for planning commission and possibly some. Summary information for what we talked about in land use committee.
We're still agreeing.
Okay.
It, it's the, that document for the planning commission, instead of the council voting, and then there's a document that goes to the planning commission. The council votes, the, the council vote to refer. Has a draft of that document that says, yep, this is the document that's going there. We're good with it, or I don't like this, or I'm concerned about the ambiguity of that. That was my. Understanding from how you described it.
Yeah.
I'm just clarifying, the document is proposed code, not necessarily the staff memo.
Oh. Thank you, same, Bob.
I think you said both, and I think we're saying both.
Yeah.
Is that a problem?
Um. I can see that becoming an issue potentially depending on timing. Um, if something is referred and there is a time gap between when it is referred and when it's taken up. Um, there could be updates or changes or other issues that come into play.
Well, that's exactly what we're dealing with. We just recalled timing. Heard timing was, timing is passed and the issues are clear and, or have changed. And so it goes back and you fix that. Then I think that's the same issue. The point, the point is council is comfortable with what they want to send to. The planning commission. They, they're, they agree on the detail. They're, so it can be included in. So. I think that, I think I, I agree with that issue. I don't, uh, we can discuss step five here, right? Well, in. Yeah.
But, but more, because that says revised code, sorry.
Yeah. I agree with what we're doing. That was discussed. What we should do is, we'll talk about it offline. We have to get back to clarify something this too then. And be there when we talk about it.
And then the, the only thing I have here is we discussed land use tuning meeting every other month and it seems like there's a bunch of work that is landed. So I don't know if every other month makes sense or if there's some other way to. That's a good idea.
We also said as needed. So we can certainly do a special land use meeting, for sure.
Okay, great. Any, I think the.
Question on, step eight. Uh. How many times does commerce come back and say?
No.
And second question is, what happens if they say, you know, is that within their purview and rights to say?
No.
Or is it just check the box?
I don't think they actually say no. I think they say, wow, if you were to do this. Growth management board might be calling you some complaints.
So it's an advisor. It's advisor when it goes to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, the council member has it exactly right, especially when it comes to the conference of plan. Um, that's exactly their role. When it comes to, uh, individual development regulatory measures, unless they see something that's a red flag. They, they receive it and you won't receive comments back. Uh, but it's at the growth management, management hearing board that you really run the risk of making sure that, you know, you got everything absolutely air to.
Thank you.
Okay. Um. Okay, I, uh, section six point three. The graph ordinance. Uh, regarding the referral, referral of development regulation amendments to the planning commission. Right. This is. An ordinance that we've had some discussion on, I think. Yeah. I'd like to bring to some level of motion or decide whether we're going to bring a motion and pass this, the purpose of which is, uh. That for certain items as council decides, should they, should they decide, uh, they could handle certain planning development. Uh, or, uh, issues that would, issues. Uh, development issues that would normally, that might always, might have gone to the planning commission, they can handle themselves. And there's a. An ordinance that defines some of those items in the level of the right. So. I'm looking to see if we want to.
I have a question about how the process works on the motion, the process. The, the, the way this process works now, before this ordinance comes into, before considering this ordinance. That because, and I'm, I'm asking this question based on the discussion we had. I think you were out of town and there was, there is discussion. And what I'm not clear on right now is, um, the way things work today, how many public hearings are there? For a change to a development regulation? I think that there's one in front of the planning commission when they're discussing it. Is that the only one? Is there an additional one when the council takes the planning commission's recommendation or is it one? I, I, I don't know, so I'm asking.
I should just be wrong. I thought it was the point of the planning mission.
Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've always operated, the council always has a public hearing on any action it takes regarding, uh, code updates and such. Uh, and then, then you do have planning commission actions.
Okay.
I just want, sorry, because.
I think. Though I believe what the law requires is one pub, at least one public hearing. So that could be held in front of the planning commission or the city council. Uh, the, with, since you've created a planning commission, most appropriate would be in front of the planning commission. You can have more than one and often you do, depending on the input you get from the public, but I believe you're only required to have one, at least one.
Thank you. Sorry, I just wanted that clarity. Um, all right, so I'm, I'm looking for a motion to approve. This ordinance regarding the referral of development regulations to the planning commission. Do I have a motion? Oh, okay. With my council member Miramoto. If I have a second.
Second.
Second vision by council member Wizard Slifka. Uh, any discussion? Anything, council member Olson?
Well.
Sorry, I didn't ask. Yeah, I didn't go around the table.
Sure, sure. So, um, all right, so I. I guess I'm, I'm maybe lost track here. Um. And so the, to summarize this, we're, we're talking about, this is the one that keeps coming up, right? For the last three, this is the third council meeting. Is it just about this one? So we're talking about. Um, so no, I, I would not concur with this. I, I won't be voting for this because. I do think that, um, we do need more, uh, input from, from, uh, from the public and not less. And just simply going through the, the planning commission and even if nobody does. You know, from, from the public, they, they have the option to, but even if they don't. Um, you know, chime in on it. That's, you know, that's five people from, from our community that otherwise wouldn't necessarily have, have the. Opportunity to, to chime in on, on something. So. Yeah, I, I get, I'm, I'll still be voting no on this.
Okay. Um. I'll go. Council member Wizard, do you have anything?
Not very much.
Anything?
No.
Council member Sinwell, you have any comments?
I do. At the last meeting that we spoke about this, might have been early June. We went around the horn and I think we all, most of us agreed that we wanted more throughput. And one of the, um, concerns we had was, we called it checks and balances. We talked about stuff like super majority. We talked about making sure there are at least two bites at the apple for the public. To hear these things. And so I was a little surprised and frankly disappointed I saw this ordinance because it, 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 it didn't. It seemed not to recognize that discussion. On June eleventh. And, uh, that's, that's at least what I was, when I went, walked away from that discussion, I thought there was at least that, um, view for most of the council members. But anyway, so as it's written, without those checks and balances and to make sure that the public gets those multiple bites at the apple, I. Couldn't, couldn't support it as written.
Thought we did. I think, I, I think we, 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 it was a, a majority of the council before, but now I believe it's all councils, isn't it? So there was a wording change to be. Which, which was my, which was my concern last time, but I, but it, so if I read the language, it was, it was an increase in the number of council.
So that's a great question. I'm, I'm looking through it right now. I think if you look at page four. Or so, so it's nineteen oh one oh five, section B. It says, upon a majority vote of the full city council. The council may like to address. An issue on its own. So it is still a majority vote. The.
Of full council.
Of the full council.
Full council, yeah. Oh, so the way I read that was full council means five and a majority vote of three out of five.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, so my concern before was that if we had two council missing, three would be a quorum and could in fact pass by a majority of three. Right? That was my concern before, but now we have a full council and if full council, three votes, then. Yeah, that's, that, that's the majority of full council. And that is, but correctly legally, that's wrong.
So I'm, I'm, I'm glad you offered that because I thought a bunch about, I, I went back and watched some of the meeting and, and the conversation. So I, I agree with you about how this works as written, as revised here. The other is that, um, anything that happens here, the, the mayor has the right to veto.
I agree, I agree.
And so we have multiple checks.
We do.
On safety here.
Okay.
Um, I don't know what the term is for voting one at a time as compared to.
Roll, roll call vote.
Thank you. I think it's called a roll call.
Yes.
So we will do, we will do that in a little. We will do roll call vote, start with council member one.
Aye.
Okay, council member two.
No.
That's member three. That's a member four.
No.
That's a member five.
They really want to say pass.
Aye. Okay, so the motion passes, three votes to two, and thank you for your.
And you can.
And I can, I can veto that and go back. Okay.
He's down.
All right, moving on, six point five. Four, I'm sorry, six, six point four. So planning resources discussion, I'm going to let our city administrator handle, start the discussion. I just do want to make sure that this is an area for discussion and it will help, help us planning as well as budget.
Excuse me. So that said, I am going to introduce this and it's going to be a little bit longer than I originally envisioned. I think this is an important discussion and I'd like to get as much information out there as we possibly can. So, hang with me, okay? So as many of you are aware, this discussion around planning priorities and resource is a long time coming. The mayor and I wanted to have this discussion now for a few, few reasons. We've reached a natural reevaluation point now that comp plan work is beginning to wrap up. We have a clearer idea of the future work that will be required as a result of state legislative mandates. And it's that time of year where we start putting the budget together for next year. So for the past several years, we've experienced a steady increase in planning projects and initiatives, both in terms of volume and complexity. And we see that trend continuing for at least the next few years. Some of the increase is driven by resident calls to action and city council priorities for updating the city's land use code following many years of city and activity on this front. The bigger component has to do with the city's response to new legislation and growing expectations from regulatory agencies and regional partners to accommodate more homes and address housing affordability. Not only is this work mandatory in many respects, it requires a significant investment of time and attention to get it right on behalf of residents. The consequences of not doing so represents a serious threat to our shared community vision. Clyde Hill does not have a dedicated planning professional on staff beyond the temporary point one FTE, whatever that we've got going now, nor a planning or community development department. Interestingly enough, we went ahead and took a quick look at our five comps that we use for our police, our police negotiations, and all five of the comparables we utilize for our police negotiations of either a principal planner or a community development department staff. This includes our western neighbor Medina. Since the city began its heavy lift on updating its comprehensive plan, we've looked to outside consulting firms to provide the additional expertise and capacity that we lack. This strategy has provided very mixed results. At times burdening staff with additional work as we find ourselves having to work around and fix the mistakes of consultants who for various reasons could not provide the level and quality of service needed for such a large politically sensitive project. On the other hand, we've had good success using engineering, GIS, and environmental planning consultants to accomplish specific discrete tasks. Issues with consultants are not always easy to address, especially as we are far from the only city experiencing the increased demand for planning work. We find it difficult to compete with larger cities for the best consulting firms. As we plan ahead to deliver an upcoming planning, planning mandates and priorities, staff is very mindful of the desire to provide a high level of service to our community. We're also mindful of past challenges working with consultants at the large project management level, as well as recent discussions around planning process improvements. We're hopeful that a renewed focus on obtaining early council member guidance will reduce the need for extensive staff updates and rework in new deliverables. Our resource proposal tonight breaks out future planning work into two buckets, short term roughly in the next 12 months and long term for everything after that. So in the short term planning, the city has some pretty significant impactful work to do around implementation of middle housing and ADU legislation code updates, among other things. The deadline for this implementation is June 2025. At the same time, the city is committed its, to pursuing land use code updates unrelated to legislative mandates in order to address outstanding issues that have been identified by city council as well as residents and staff. The city plans to part ways with that will our current on-call planning consultant when the comp plan is adopted at the end of the year. In the meantime, we are not looking to work with that well on other priorities because we also have them an on-call contract with them. It is, on a similar note, our part-time planning manager, Eric Jensen's contract is up at the end of the year. This potentially leaves a big gap in planning expertise and capacity despite the immediate needs mentioned above. To fill this gap on a short-term basis, staff is recruiting for new on-call planning firm interviews with two responsive firms are scheduled for this Friday. If we are successful in negotiating the contract over the next several weeks, the plan is to have this firm manage a large portion of the legislative mandate work, including middle housing ADU code updates. Approval of contract will not require additional funding in 2024, however, it will require funding in 2025. In-house staff will continue to oversee the on-call planning consultant and bridge the gap with council and planning commission as needed. Similar to the past year, existing management staff along with the city attorney will need to be closely involved in any additional land use code updates. So in the long-term planning, the city should seriously consider the growing trend in planning work volume and complexity and put in place the resources and organizational structure to accommodate it on a permanent and sustainable basis. Longer-term planning priorities that have been identified for Clyde Hill include continued land use code updates, a new tree code, urban forestry management plan, potential growth from lot splitting and smaller lot sizes, and work associated with required climate planning and annual comp plan updates. In addition to this project-based work, administration has identified a need to begin succession planning for the upcoming retirement of our long-term building official, who holds a great deal of institutional knowledge. At the same time, administration is looking for opportunities to establish a level of in-house specialized planning expertise that has not existed in Clyde Hill previously, to tie together disparate planning functions and provide more timely and responsive information to both elected officials in the community. So we'd like to provide several options for the long term, which include option one, adding an in-house principal planning position, ideally centralizing all planning and building functions underneath that position. Our proposal would be to fund this position beginning in mid-2025 as we're phasing out work with the new on-call planning consultant. Option two, extending and expanding planning consultant contract, creating a contract city planner half to full-time position that can be scaled up or down according to funding and need. While this option is attractive for its flexibility and reduced cost, its success depends on finding the right consultant fit, which may prove difficult. It also does not necessarily fit into the succession planning model. Option three, reevaluating the long-term priorities in place of additional planning resources or in lieu of a more extensive planning consultant contract, the city may decide to eliminate or defer some of its long-term priorities not associated with state mandate. So I wanted to thank council for listening to the planning priorities and resource options. The administration has identified, it's never easy to ask for more, especially when faced with persistent and ongoing general fund challenges. At the end of the day, rather than consistently under-deliver and risk staff burnout, it's better to ask for what we need to get the job done right. I know the mayor and I both look forward to hearing your thoughts to help us identify any consensus there may be around increasing resources for planning-related priorities as we develop the 2025 budget. To summarize, the questions we're looking for input are, the short term, is council supportive of a new on-call consultant contract for the next year to manage the legislative mandate process? And then in the longer term, is the list of priorities in the memo a complete list? How should we approach building sustainable capacity for planning priorities and what level of investment is council willing to support? Thank you for listening to my long-winded thing and.
So I'll open up for questions or comments. I'm sorry. There's no angle. Thank you. Pass, I'll come back. All right. He's always an. Council member Olson.
Sure.
So we can also, we can also ask questions. There'll be more than, opportunities for more than one question. So I guess I, I just don't see room in the budget right now for hiring another head count for in-house planning position. And, you know, unless you can show me somewhere that we're going to cut and save money to, in order to, to make room for it, for me, that's off the table. And and I guess you're, when you say reevaluate long-term priorities, that's interesting to me. You know, I'd like to talk more about that. I don't, I guess I don't really know too much what, what, what you're referring to, you know, ways of, of, of just, you know, doing more with less. I'd like to understand more of what that means. But, so I, you know, extending a consultant contract.
You want to give them a sense of what, what that reevaluation was, or?
Which part is that? Reevaluating priorities part?
Yeah, the long-term priorities specifically.
I mean, I think that's a lot of, there are costs associated with the code changes that we make. So if we don't make as many code changes, it's costless.
Yeah, I think we should be doing that, frankly, you know, I mean, well, reevaluating anyway, and, and some of that stuff, great, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna make it back onto the docket and but maybe some of it won't, you know, the priorities change over time. I've seen it since I've been here. That, and, and so I, I think that that is our duty as a city council to reevaluate long-term priorities constantly. So I'd like to do that. And if there's some sort of initiative that you know, that can be proposed to do that, and you know, so we can talk specifically about those long-term priorities, I'd like to see it.
But, yeah, this relates to the planning, the items that we have or may have on the list that we ultimately want to refer, council have council refer to the planning commission. And, and you go back and you look and you say, well, how important is this for us to do? Do we really want to do this? And you're right, things change.
Yeah.
And so.
We should be doing that.
That would reduce the workload. I guess it doesn't reduce the initial workload because you're, you can have this many added to the side, but you still got to get through that first group.
You're right. I don't think that's the total solution.
But it's, but it's an option.
I, I think that, in my opinion, it seems like that, along with extending the consultant contract is, is the best route to go, in my opinion. Thank you.
So one item I didn't mention earlier too is that items like the climate, climate change, climate policy, did I get my right words here? The mandate that's coming down on climate change is, we'll have some funds from the state again from Commerce that I think up to a hundred thousand dollars potentially. So at least there's some amount of.
There's a hundred thousand dollars set aside for the city to do its mandated climate planning work that is due in 2020. It encompasses two years of contracted, just like it was with this comp plan, two-year contract. It's a hundred thousand dollars coming to you.
Okay. Moving your motor.
I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, I, I absolutely walk behind the fact that, I mean, there is work to be done between some of the, the state legislature things. I mean, and that stuff, it's not, right? We can re-prioritize all we want, but at the end of the day, there is a ton of work that's to be done. I have no problems you know, figuring out the, the, the most budget-friendly way, having, frankly, having been a consultant, you know, versus an FTE, there are trade-offs, certainly. And I, I would suspect that at the end of the day, it's almost the bottom line hit between contract versus FTE. It probably resolves itself pretty quickly. Yeah, I suspect it's probably pretty close. I would be in favor more of a full-time hire that provides institutional knowledge that lasts over the year. That said, I also agree with Councilman Olson that we have a budget crisis. So, I mean, I think this is more of a, in my mind, it's more of a budget question than it is a needs question. So if we can make the budget work, I'm all in.
Thank you for your comments. That was really helpful to have everything laid out the way that you did. I, I agree that we have, we need consulting help now. So there's no way we're going to be able to get the June 2025 work done without hiring out. For that, that being said, I'm concerned about the RFQ and the scope for services. So one of the things that's on the list is conducting gap analyses of the city's existing land use code. And I'm not sure that that belongs in this contract where we're just trying to get the work done that we need to do for June 2025. Yes, sure. We did some pre-interviews with a few different firms to get a sense of how to kind of shape the RFQ. And it was mentioned several times that part of the work of implementing code update, part of the project work related to middle housing would be to first look at our code and do a gap analysis of our code as it applies to middle housing and figure out what portions of our code we need to change because there are chain reactions and it's not just necessarily one area. So it's very specific and tailored to middle housing. Okay, that helps. It's not written that way here. So that's, that's concerning. In terms of the long-term, I agree that we probably need somebody in-house for good nothing else for the institutional knowledge. And I would imagine that if we have a full-time hire, that would make it, make the workflow easier. My concern echoing, council members Olson and Muramoto, is the budget and how we make this work. And I'm wondering if some of that role of community development director rolls into other positions or how, how we look at organizing the staff to get the work done.
Yeah, I get it. Council member Sinwell.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, first, there's a lot to digest here in a short amount of time. The, the instant thought that comes to my head is that it would be at the right point in time to, one of the reasons we have the mayor in his spot is he has operational experience. And, you know, getting the mayor's independent perspective on which way to proceed, I think would be of good value because he's closest to it. He has the background to, to, to give a recommendation. And that, because of that, that will go a long way with me. Point, point two would be, it's Clyde Hill, right? So it's, you're absolutely right. We want good services to, to the residents, you know, and there's probably ways to improve from the baseline where we're at. On the other hand, from the regulatory standpoint, what I would want, because we are low-growth, fully built out, I don't want to be controversial here, but I, I would strive for a very low-end compliance with any regulation or rule that we have to do. And, and don't take this as a criticism because I know we all have good intentions and we all are working hard. But when I look back at the comprehensive plan document, I, I see a lot of opportunity to get to, we could have, we could have, we could have gotten to this place a lot easier, less time spent, less money incurred. And that's just my own personal view based on my background and experience. And I saw that, I'm seeing this comprehensive plan document as a microcosm of maybe what's to come. And I, I would like to avoid that through change processes. And then, and then the last, the last comment would be, yeah, you know, for the long term, I, I do, I do agree, you know, I do have a bias toward in-house versus consulting because I like that in-house expertise, you know, kind of follows, this kind of reminds me of the Medina model a little bit. And that seems like that serves them well. And then I guess my actual, my actual last comment is on the, on the long-term priorities, that's a, that's a whole different dialogue. As I think the mayor pointed out, this is just to get us over the hump on the planning mechanisms. And that's what this discussion's about, but that's, that's my feedback.
Thank you. You ready, council member Conlatch? I don't have any more council members to call on, so it's up to you now.
Yep, well, I, I wanted to check, like, the, it was a strong statement. There's a lot in there that I hadn't, that wasn't in the document that I had, and I wanted some time to, to, to process it. I'm, I'm going to try to have a budget of three points. First, it's a really strong document and a super helpful statement. And, and, you know, heartfelt thanks, I know that reflects a lot of work. And I think it's helpful and I think it helps the community understand what we're facing. And I think it's important to acknowledge that upfront. The, the second point, and I'm gonna use, uh, council member Muramoto's comments, is that the work is real. We can reprioritize all we want. But there is a lot of work and it's not compressible or cuttable. There's state requir- on the one hand, there's state requirements and there, there are other things that, there are technically state requirements, like sightline visibility. We're overdue for, by many years, not quite a decade, but by many years. Then like, do we really have to do something about hedges? Well, technically, no, but when you think about the consternation that's caused. So point two is the work is real and we can reprioritize all we want. It's not really going to have a material.
Chairs on the Titanic.
The, the third item clearly is budget. We've all talked about budget. And I'm gonna quote Mayor Friedman or paraphrase Mayor Friedman on this, which is, you, you do the right thing. Budget is not an excuse. You, you find the right thing to do, but then you find a way to do it. And I, I think that's, that's our challenge here. I, I, I don't want to get into the, should it be in-house or not in-house? I, I, I want to offer a couple of thoughts around, like, how do we do this and not just use the budget as an excuse? When I first met council member Muramoto, I remember we talked about budget and you talked about a zero-based budget, which is start from zero and you say, okay, what do I really need to do? You really, and I think when it comes to what we can afford to do and how we use people and how we use the chairs we have, before we talk about adding another chair, say if we had no chairs, what would we go and do? And I'm offering this not, that's not a solution, that's an approach. I, I think that, that, that approach, whether it's actual zero base or, or you just take that as inspiration, I think about, one of the documents that will go to the BAC, uh, that I saw, that, that talked about, um, city budget priorities from a resident point of view, where it's public safety and then all this land use planning stuff. So the answer is, this is clearly important. There must be things that it's more important than, than what we're doing. So why don't we allocate appropriately? I'm, I, I think that what really drove this home to me is council member Sinmo's comment about looking at where we landed with the comprehensive plan and thinking about how many energy units we expended to get to that sequence of words. Like, do we really need to spend all that time and energy and money to get to that sequence of words? There, there have to be efficiencies that, that, that we can offer. And, and frankly, there are some other solution options that are probably better discussed offline. We don't need to take this, this space for them. But they're, they're, they're mostly executional aspects of, of these three. So again, really strong document and statement, super appreciated. The work is real. We can't pretend it's not there. And, and how do we go about doing the right thing with the budget instead of, well, we can't because of the budget? Thank you.
So, uh, I'll, I think there may be more comments and I welcome them, but here's what I'm hearing. We need the consultant to take care of the legislative requirements at this point and in the next, probably into next year. We should, in, in connection with the budget, do, uh, or evaluate an organization in order to, uh, understand, uh, how we can, I guess kind of layer on all the other things we wish to do from an organization standpoint, which would, you know, maybe include some of the legislative stuff in terms of high, of hiring, more planning help, whether it's in-house versus, it's all, could go either way. But I, uh, but, but the discussion that I'm thinking in my head, it's, it's more organization. How do we, how do we structure the organization to effectively accomplish this? And, uh, frankly, do other things we need to do that may not be related to that. Get, get more value from the existing staff we have as well. We have lots of talent here and Maya, Maya can do lots of other things in addition to the planning she does. So, and I'm just using an example, trying to point any other way. Then there's, then there's the funding issue. And part of it, when it comes to a budget, it's not just, do we have, in funding from a budget standpoint and a cost standpoint? But it's, do we really want to do that? Because we do have the funding. It's just we might dip into some reserves or some excess funds, but it's there. We think it's important enough to get done if we wish to do that. That's, I'm not recommending anything. That's a decision to make. And, uh, and then evaluate in-house versus contractor to the extent that we want. But at the end of the day, what, once we come back, we, with a more substantial plan, which is, you guys are helpful now because I, gives, gives us some direction to go with thinking. Then it becomes a further discussion with council on budget issue that we will make that discussion. But it's all part of the budget priorities and the plans that we actually do. I hope that's clear. That's what I'm hearing here. Do you guys agree? Just a comment? Councilmember Sinmo.
Yeah, I think you summed it up well. I mean, you might call it something like Vision 2026 or Vision 2027, depending on what year you want to go with. But, you know, I've been in a council member now for, I don't know how many months, say nine months, maybe eight, something like that. And it seems like we're sort of are at this precipice, right? We got the intersection of legislative mandates. If you talk to Lisa King and the finance gang, they're relying upon Excel spreadsheets and doing things how we used to do them 20 years ago. And at the planning commission meeting last week, I think it was, you know, it was revealed that, you know, variances are kept in folders. They're not, they're analog, not digital. And so as we think about Vision 2027, which includes organizational thoughts, you know, maybe it will require some investments about how we run finance and how we digitize the city, which should give us an ROI if done properly. And, and, and I, I can go on, but I know we're running out of time, but, but I could see a real opportunity to sort of reset the city in terms of the direction. And that would well serve the residents, uh, as well.
Fair enough. I mean, those are, yes, I, I know, I understand where you're, uh, your point and where you're going with that. Speaking from a, a company that served over 200,000 customers and used QuickBooks for their finance, their financial statements until, for many years. I get it. I get your point. Anyway, okay. So thank you for comments. I appreciate it. Is there anything else to add? All right, let's move on to, to, two quick things. If, uh, we have our attorney, our Evan from Summit, who was our labor attorney, who, who was going to give an update in, uh, in the executive session. And he's sitting there now and he's, he's on the clock, speaking of money, he's on the clock. So the question would be, do we take the break now, go into their executive session and then, and then come back and go to the next item?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. All right.
I know, but that's my.
Are you gonna join us on that call or not? I don't know. You, you had made a comment earlier.
Why don't I take a recess and I'll join you guys back in the public session?
Fair enough.
Is that okay?
And we'll, then we will, uh, it gets recessed to go into the executive session. Did you need to say something else, though? I did.
How long?
Oh, yeah. That's what you were saying. I'm just lost. I'm sorry. Put on the agenda.
One, thirty minutes.
Okay, so we will take a break for an executive session for 30 minutes and then we'll come back. The word, I think we're, that was called it. Can you mute?
No.
We just pick.
And.
Okay. So we're back on and Councilmember Sinwa, we're all back here. We'll get started back on the agenda. You prepared to go?
Roger that.
Okay. So the next item was 6.5, which was a comprehensive plan update on the vision statement. This was something that Councilmember Wisner Slivka wanted to review. I think we have, I'm going to actually turn it over to her because I think she has a proposal here at this point. Is that correct?
Yes. So there's a email included in the packet that I wrote in June proposing to shorten the vision statement because what we have on the comprehensive plan doesn't feel like a vision statement to me. I want it something less descriptive and more aspirational. So my proposal is to change the vision statement to the city of Clyde Hill strives to be a diverse community rooted in respect, trust, and integrity that values preserving and enhancing our natural environment for generations to come.
Okay. And so was it your desire that maybe we tabled the more formal discussion on this into a later date?
We can, if, oh well, I'd be curious to hear people's comments now. Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's, let's have that discussion. So.
Okay. I got the thumbs up.
We got Councilmember Kamovic with thumbs up. Councilmember Olson?
Um, you know, the verbiage on here has really been worked a lot already, you know, by, by the planning commission. And I guess I don't really understand the benefit of, of what the proposal is. So if, if you could maybe explain the, the benefit more, because I, I don't mind that it's, has a little bit of a descriptor of the city, you know, in, in front of the vision statement. What's the harm in it?
I think that vision statements don't typically have descriptors, descriptors in the text in the comprehensive plan. And I'm just trying to put something out there that, that gives us a one line that people can understand what we're trying to accomplish for the future without having to, to wade through a lot of other language.
I, I do, I, I guess my comment, I like it as it is.
Okay. And that's actually what I think we're looking for.
Sure. Councilmember Ramona? I like it as short, concise. I'm all into being concise.
Councilmember Sinwa?
I liked it as it was with the added word of view. And, and when I, look, I think a vision statement can be defined in a number of ways. I think councilman, the council member defines vision statement certainly accurately. The, the MRSC defines it as a, it's sort of that it's supposed to capture what community members most value about their community. And it's a shared image of what they want their community become, to become. So the reason I like the current language, and I do like her language as well, don't get me wrong, but it, it's been through public commentary. It's, it's gone through a bunch of due diligence. It's sort of gone through the, is it a little bit rambly? It's a little bit folksy? Yes, it certainly is. Could it be shortened? Yeah. But I, I, I just, I'll just say I like the, the process it went through. It reflects what the community, I think, sort of wanted in the planning commission. And so for those reasons, a super long-winded answer to, I sort of like the long, long-winded version better than the shortened version.
Okay. So at, at this point, we've had some discussion in terms of further review of, of the comp plan. We have the ability and have every intention to go through some of the remaining comments as well as other updates to the plan, especially after we hear back from, from the state, which we have a right to do. And I think it's been proposed that rather than do work and study sessions intermittently through the next few months, which would then cost us money and effort, outside money to do, that we wait till we get to the, the Department of Commerce comments. And then we come back and we review it and we can have another stab at the vision statement as well as other comments and direction. And that would, that would put that discussion in the fall, sometime later in the fall. The point being, one review, take the time to do the right.